Second staple, I always mess up the files.
That staple is done.
All right, we will call to order this February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Lawrence County Commissioners. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. Carrie, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for just a brief moment. Thank you. Carol, would you please go over?
Mr. Spielvogel?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here. I want to note, I actually feel like I'm on a movie set right now. We felt like we've got two cameras and the meeting's also being recorded by us for you to use in the minutes, so just everybody be aware that you are on video and on recording. That being said, do we have any? I'm guessing we do, we have the packet in front of us. Any row officer reports and comments?
Yes.
Mr. Treasurer, please come forward.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Nice to see you. Long day to our Commissioners. I'm happy to submit the two thousand and nineteen informational packet from the County Treasurer's office. Every year around this time, we put out this packet and basically it explains everything your Lawrence County Treasurer's Office does, is responsible for. It has all the statistics, all the revenue that we bring in, all the duties, all the responsibilities, so basically it's informational, so I'm happy to submit that to you today as far as that goes. I have great news, our county tax bills are being mailed out tomorrow.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay. Excellent.
Yes, so these should be going out tomorrow. And I also provided you with the Treasurer's report for February. So basically, the potential for collections is a little over twenty-nine point nine million dollars. Fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine tax bills will be mailed out tomorrow at a mileage of eight point three oh nine, and the office is ready to start collections. The outreach is scheduled, our first one beginning March seventeenth, will be going out March, April, May into the community, visiting twenty-three municipalities, and we're ready to go. We're all set. Any questions?
I'll just note, I remember when you first gave me this report, Juju was the chief deputy and Melissa was the second chief deputy, so it's good that, you know, we've switched those around and welcome.
Absolutely.
I guess welcome to the team or, you know, further in the ladder on the team.
There you go.
We're happy to have you both in here, in your new positions, and thank you to your office for all the work that you guys do.
Yes.
Very welcome.
You?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, any other, I've not seen any other row officers out there. Up next, we have a public comments section. I would ask that if your comments are related to a state or federal matter, that you'd seek your representatives on the state or federal level, and if they're on a municipality level, you either seek out your borough council, your township supervisors, or your city councilor or mayor, depending on the municipality of which you reside. We would also ask that you keep your comments to, there were about five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak, a member of the public that wishes to speak for the board? Carrie, come on up.
I'm just gonna say briefly, the airport situation's been fixed and there's been no failure to this point, so I'm done.
To this point. We'll see if we can't change that.
Everything looks positive.
Good, that's what we like to hear. We're gonna go here and then we'll come over to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the other hand. For Director here on, I'm asking again that the meeting minutes from the prior meeting be made available to the public for review, and to further that statement, to say that really anything in the board packet should also be available to the public for review. So, you know, any resolutions that are being proposed, that we get to see the full text of that resolution, et cetera. I have brought you copies, I actually remembered to make copies for everybody. The, maybe you are not aware that the Office of Open Records, a couple things, there's a front and back, and I didn't print the entire page off the internet because I wanted to encompass it, but Office of Open Records does provide training within agencies. It would be wonderful if the county would offer a training session, maybe hosted at the county building for all of our new establishments and boroughs, and also agents within the county itself. Additionally, they also have a, they offer advisory opinions when there may be a question of law, and specific to this sort of theme, whether or not board docs are available to the public. So I would encourage the Commissioners or the solicitor to engage the OOR and ask for an advisory opinion specific to the board doc and the minutes of the prior meeting. There is on the OOR website, when you go to the page that discusses advisory opinions, they actually list some advisory opinions in the past and ones that they've also denied. It's partially on the backside of the agenda, but like I said, they didn't print the entire page.
Right, sure.
There's contact information for those advisory opinions. There is one advisory opinion that they do list that has to do with county council. It's a little bit more specific into if you have subcommittees that maybe don't meet very often, infrequently, that because they meet infrequently doesn't mean that the public should have to wait for those meeting minutes until that next schedule. So that advisory opinion is sort of specific to that issue, but there is some language in here about the overlap of the right-to-know law and the sunshine law, and whether or not those minutes in the board packet should be available. That's all I have right now.
So I'll just.
Thank you.
We're not gonna give them today, but that being said, within the next two weeks, along with a whole host of other initiatives, there's like a ninety-nine percent chance you'll have what you want, the minutes and the board documents.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
It did, like we said before, it just takes time. We're getting our systems in place and reviewing and reorganizations of the different departments. Oh, you're here again.
For those of you who missed the Rip-Roaring Salary Board meeting this morning, we had the adoption office is in the process of reorganizing.
I liked it so much, I came back.
I'm glad, very good, yeah. Yes, a lot of, we're just, it's, well, I'll wait for comments, but it's time for that, but, yeah, just wanted that to know that.
And then, I'm sorry, help me out with your name, I don't.
Katie.
Katie, I don't believe we've met before.
No. I'm Katie Peterson, the Director of the Youth Broke Mission Barn, and just to let you guys know, your website is, the county website is not up to date with your names.
Yeah.
We know.
And so just try to find the right contact to email the document to, I just thought I would let you know.
Thank you.
Yes, that, we have been building wheelchair ramps for twelve years here in the Lawrence County, and before they were doing it Lawrence Mercer and Butler Counties, but we have such high demand here in the Lawrence County that we have limited our ministry to just here. We do sell to other ministries that do in the other counties, so we're not leaving them hanging, or we partner with other ministries in other counties, with other agencies, and to get the funding and things like that. And that we have built approximately a hundred and ninety ramps in the twelve years. Each year we build twenty to twenty-five ramps or steps or railings, whatever the person is in need of at that time to have easier access to get in and out of the house. And currently I have, as of this morning, I have six applications already ready to start the docket when weather breaks in late March or April. We usually build March or April till October, November, whenever we get our season done, the ramp's done, or the weather changes on us, whichever is, because we are fair weather, volunteers are fair weather volunteers, but we are able to get all of our projects done in that time. And so I am here asking for the continuation of, or renewal of grants that the County Commissioners have been granting us. I am not sure exactly how many years, but the past several years of between twelve and fifteen thousand, or ten and fifteen thousand, I should say, they have been doing it. The last several years, it's been about twelve. And with the partnership with the Caroline Knox Foundation and the Rotary Alliance Club and other county support, our families have been able to pay very minimal if anything, or some of them do pay full price if they're able, but the higher their income means the higher their medical bills usually, because it doesn't cover everything. And so we don't take income into consideration. And just for a fun fact, one of our ramp recipients last year, who's on a very, very fixed income, out in the county, I forget which township, but she is sending us a five-dollar bill every month to pay towards hers. And so it doesn't matter if it's five dollars for a five-hundred-dollar ramp, or if it's, or a thousand-dollar ramp, you know, whatever it is, or if it's just giving us the time and volunteers, or, you know, we just go build it whenever the family needs it on their wake list, so.
As Commissioner Vogler noted to me about five minutes ago, the money for that generally comes out of our registered reporters' housing fund, which I believe is accumulated when properties transferred throughout the county, there's a fee that's tacked on, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
And then that money is all part of the one fund, and we use a part of that fund to help pay for this. We'll need to check and see the status of that fund and the money's currently in it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, yes, if we could know in the next month, because then I know for sure.
Oh, within the next month, absolutely.
You know, starting our season, then we can tell the families that it's funded, and we do let the families know that there are county grants that are paying for it.
Yeah, within the next month, no problem.
Right, but I just thought I would let you know, so.
Absolutely. Before she sits down, I.
Absolutely.
Dick Craig, a couple of years ago, was kind enough to invite that board of Commissioners to your facility out in Hickory Township.
Yes.
Would it be possible at some point for Loretta and Morgan to come out and see what you do?
I would love for all of you to come out, even, I understand on the last, your last meeting of the month, sometimes you go out to different places, is that right? I would love for you to come and have your meeting there, or just to come and have a tour and anything like that, just let me know about a month ahead of time, so I can have everything scheduled, and I'd love to give you a tour of all that we do. It's not just the ramps, it is disaster relief supply networks through the United Methodist District.
The boxes that you put.
Buckets.
Yes.
Buckets and hygiene kits are our two major kits that we do. And then it was during the Lawrence County floods, I've only been here three years, so, but during those, but also we give seven thousand out throughout western Pennsylvania and east Ohio during the flood season, and then fifteen thousand goes nationally.
It was very impressive when we were out there.
Yes, and for those that are from the area, it was Dr. Mildred Rogers Farm, who was the first doctor in Hickory Township in providing dairy for her.
We know Hickory Township people.
But a lot of people know about Dr. Rogers Farm, so.
Beautiful site.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'd love to.
We would love to.
Yes, just letting them. Thank you.
Good people in the county, everywhere in the county, yes. Excellent.
Any additional public comments? Okay, hearing none. There will be an additional section for public comments at the end if anyone wishes another opportunity to speak. Up next, we have fiscal and contractual. I will just note again for the record that we have a, we are currently advertising for bids and proposals for CDBG Shenango Phase Two project, for Shenango Township FY sixteen and FY seventeen. This is a project that the county administers through our CDBG program with Shenango's allotment of CDBG funds through the Commonwealth. Additionally, we have another request for bid for Quaker Falls Bridge rehabilitation. This letter reads, "The Lawrence County Board of Commissioners are accepting bids for a one-time contract to perform certain professional services for Lawrence County, Pennsylvania. All documents will need to be prepared in accordance with specifications. On Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at eight a.m.," so, a couple minutes ago, a couple hours ago, "a mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held for the site. Each qualifying bid must be accompanied by a bid bond payable to the county of Lawrence in an amount equal to ten percent of the total bid. Comply with the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act in Section Three, Minority Business Enterprise and or Women Business Enterprise are encouraged to participate." And this is for, again, the Quaker Falls Bridge Rehabilitation Project. All bids must be received by three p.m. February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, in our Controller's Office, which is located right over there.
Yes.
That bridge is actually an old railroad bridge.
Oh, no kidding?
So it's, I think structurally it's in pretty sound shape, but they need, as noted here, it needs to be rehabbed.
Yeah.
So glad to see they're moving forward.
That's a phenomenal project, and I'll stress again, I think it was a wise purchase by the former board to acquire that.
Yes.
That parcel property with the goal of enhancing our recreational services here. But that's all we have for fiscal and contractual. Up next, we have the warrant register, and so we'll take a minute, I'm giving each minute to review that, and then I'll take a motion.
It's short this time, I'll move to accept.
And I'll second, yes.
The motion of the second is under discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Up next, we have the approval of the minutes from the Tuesday, February eleventh meeting. If you guys have a second to look over those, and then entertain a motion.
I'll move for the approval of the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
And I would second.
All right, hearing a motion, second, three discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I need to file an objection again to the adoption of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have the proclamations and certificates for today, so we'll move on to the report section of the agenda, and under staff reports, we have our Chief Assessor, JR, to report on interim billing. JR?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dan, you're used to this, but I'll go ahead and update this to, twice a year I'll come to the meeting to update interim billing, and what interim billing is, is during the year, once our county freezes our tax rolls and our bills are mailed out, there's a period where my staff is still out there reassessing properties. And in order for us and under county code, we're allowed to go ahead and add those to the tax rolls through an interim process. So what I like to do is come to you and explain and give you the total that we're gonna be sent out. On a good note, this is unbudgeted revenue, which I know you guys like to hear, so that's something that is a positive, but I'm also gonna give you an update on the project that we started at the end of last year, a sketch detection software, which kind of falls into the same thing as interim, because we can institute interim bills on what is found in the sketch detection. Keep in mind, an interim bill is only mailed out if the assessment chain is greater than twenty-five hundred dollars. We determined a cost study that it was not worth us to send a bill out, because we would lose money if it was less than twenty-five hundred dollars. So any property that's on increase between their previous assessment and their new assessment based off of a new construction, such as a barn, new house, deck, so on and so forth, will receive an interim bill. Those bills get mailed out April first and August first. This report will be, is gonna be mailed out April first. We wanted to give a one-month time span, we didn't want people to get confused that they're getting two county bills at the same time and thinking they only have to pay one. So with cooperation from our County Treasurer, we have color-coded the bills, so the bill that goes out for the interim bill this year will have last year's color, because it technically is a two thousand and nineteen bill, because we used it to two thousand and nineteen millage, because we assessed it in two thousand and nineteen. So the property owner should be able to distinguish the difference between the two thousand and twenty bill and the two thousand and twenty interim bill. With that being said, I'm proud to announce that we have added about five point three million in assessment to, on this interim bill, which will generate just north of thirty-nine thousand dollars in additional county revenue. That's two hundred and twenty-seven parcels. That's between anything that was picked up July first to December thirty-first, so that's the second half of the year. Now, the report of our sketch detection software, there were almost twenty-one thousand properties that are gonna be reviewed. Right now, we've only reviewed two percent, because it just started at the end of last year. Three hundred and seventy-six parcels were reviewed, out of that, we picked up one point seven million in assessment, which would equate to roughly fifteen thousand dollars, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars of unreported revenue. Again, these are properties that have not taken out building permits, or there was an error when someone went out and reassessed it, maybe during the county-wide reassessment that's being determined at this time.
May I interrupt, please? Absolutely, thank you, forgive me for interrupting.
No problem.
You've cited now two different county tax figures, in other words, revenue that'll come to the county. Am I correct, though, that the school districts in which these properties are located, as well as the various municipalities in which they are located, they will also see some revenue, or am I mistaken?
Not all of them. Each of the municipal taxing authorities had to adopt their own resolution if they wanted to incorporate or participate in the interim billing. At this time, all the school districts except Mohawk and Blackhawk are participating, but only two municipalities, and that is Union and the Shands Township are the only ones that are participating in the interim billing.
Will they, may I?
Yeah.
They will eventually, down the road, begin to realize that revenue, is that correct?
I know Mohawk will, because I'm actually going and speaking to their board at the beginning of March, explaining the process. Blackhawk, considering it only consists of the Eden Valley Borough.
Right.
It may not be worth it, because they, the revenue and the number of parcels changed, I think there's only a couple hundred parcels in Eden Valley altogether, so they may not participate.
When was the, when was the last time, for example, the city and some of the other townships and boroughs were notified about the potential to participate in this program?
Just initially when we started it back in two thousand and, two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
We sent everything out. The city, school district participates, the city has not.
Okay, it might be worth it at this point to send that around, you know, to any municipality or Mohawk, I guess you'll have a meeting with them scheduled, but send something out to those municipalities just saying, hey, this is a program that we're entered into, you might be able to pick up some additional revenue over the course of the year.
Now, the city should be aware, since their County Treasurer collects for the school district, so they already know the revenue numbers. They should have brought, I would imagine, talked to their mayor and council every year, but I will go ahead and send out a letter explaining roughly what they could have lost this year, based off of my current figures.
Yeah.
I think Treasurer repen.
Treasurer repen?
Thank you. JR, just to clarify.
Yes.
The April first interim bills is based on two thousand and nineteen, so the millage would be the former, correct?
Correct.
On there, so the old millage will be applied to those bills.
Right.
Okay, then the August interns will reflect the current measure. Just so that's clarified.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and just for, just to, maybe an update for my part, the sketch detection program, is that, is that satellites?
Well, the county has a contract with a company called Evil View, formerly Pictometry, that does flights every two, every two to three years, and they go ahead and compare, and they give us a footprint. But we hired a company out of, called ESR Canada, out of Florida and Canada, that actually determined it for us last year. They submitted all the results. Based off of the number, it would have just taken my staff and myself too long to go ahead and add this right nuance, we've contracted with Evaluator Services and Technology to go ahead and add it to the assessment system. It's their software, so they would be the one that would be able to add it the quickest, because they're familiar with their software. If we were to hire another firm, we would have had to train and explain everything to them, and we don't know what kind of rift that may have been between the two vendors, because a lot of them think of everything as proprietary, so we don't wanna train another vendor how to use another vendor's software.
Right.
So plus, they know the county and the software, because they're very familiar, they've been in the county for quite some time.
All right, any other questions for the Chief Assessor?
And it's not a reassessment.
It is not a reassessment.
Let's not read that headline back again. It is not a reassessment. It's a review of properties that have a different footprint than what maybe was assessed.
Could be a new outbuilding, such as a barn or garage. All we're trying to do is make sure everyone is treated fairly, paying their fair share of taxes. We don't want one neighbor to put on a big addition and not pay taxes on it, because they didn't take out a building permit, or the building permit never dropped to the assessment office. Everyone should be paying their fair share, and that's all we're trying to do. It is not a county-wide assessment.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
One other thing I will add, we are doing it county-wide, and we started in Hickory Township.
Yes, you did.
So they were the ones that came to us first, thinking it was a reassessment, and then we were picking on it.
Oh, okay.
But we are not. It's county-wide, we will get to everyone and every municipality eventually.
Eventually.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, Commissioner reports and comments. Today we're starting with Commissioner Spielvogel.
Okay, great, I do have a couple of comments, and I'm glad I wrote them down, because I wanted to comment. Last week, our Voter Services Director, Ed Allison, spoke at a Lawrence County Action Meeting of approximately fifty or so people, explaining the new voting requirements, Act Seventy-Seven, okay, I didn't quickly remember exactly. It was very well done, well received, it was just, I was at that meeting, just very reassuring to know that our voter services through our Director, Ed Allison, is definitely on top of the entire process, because it will be different this year, as far as even getting results from election night, and I know that, you know, other counties will be dealing with the same thing, so we are working through the process, but we are in very good hands, because I truly believe, I knew with our meetings that we've had with him, that he was, he and his office were on top of it, but being there at the meeting and hearing him explain it, and there were very few questions when he was done, so that just, that reassured me that we are definitely getting the information out there, and that we feel very secure at this point in time that our election process will run smoothly.
All right, Commissioner Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to add one thing to what Commissioner Spielvogel had to say, some counties in Pennsylvania are just now going to roll out in April their new voting systems. I'm glad that we chose to do that a year ago. We've had now two elections with the paper ballot format, and by and large, it seems to have gone pretty well, but I'll note, some counties waited until this year, and the turnout's gonna be higher this year, obviously, because it's a presidential year, so we've gone through it twice now. And the other concern I do have, though, and Commissioner Spielvogel touched on it, is that because of the way the new law has been written, we will not be permitted to begin to tabulate both absentee ballots and the newly established mail-in ballots. Those will not be permitted to be tabulated until after eight o'clock p.m. on election night. And Mr. Allison is anticipating a large number of those types of ballots, because again, it's a presidential election. We've been used to getting final results within maybe three hours of the closing of the polls. I think it's gonna spill over into some time on Wednesday, but.
Right.
Don't blame us. This law was passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor. They've made the changes to which we have to adhere. And I know I'm going off on a matter that involves the Election Board, where this isn't an Election Board meeting, so forgive me for doing that, but I think as, I'm sure most all of you in the room vote, I think you do need to know that significant changes were made by the legislature and then signed into law by the governor, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I'll just note, number one, that we do currently have three vacancies on the Planning Commission that we're looking to appoint people to. To date, all three of the individuals currently filling those positions have reapplied, and then we've had four additional people reach out to either ask about, you know, what the time commitment is, what the requirements for the position are, or to directly apply for that position. The other thing I'll note is that, you know, moving into the next month and moving into the next few months, we're starting to meet with all the different municipalities from across our county. We had tremendous opportunity, I think a really good conversation last Friday with the Shenango Township Supervisors. Elwood City Council and the Elwood Mayor are coming in tomorrow. I want to. I want to say, next week is the Shannon Township, and the week after that is City of Newcastle. But we're, you know, looking to strengthen our partnerships with those entities, understand their concerns, understand their needs, and really, you know, try to work together to move, to advance our common goals. That being said, we move on to new business, where we have adult probation. So, Jamie, we have discussion and possible approval of an amendment to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for intermediate punishment program. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, that is correct. We actually were given a grant two years ago. This is the final year of the grant. It was adult probation and drug and alcohol. My modification actually is coming on behalf of drug and alcohol, but we were the recipient of the grant, that's why I'm here today. Specifically, what they're looking to amend, and the reason we're asking for modification and the revised budget is to increase in detoxification, rehab treatment expenses to cover the current expenses and projected expenses for the rest of the year, the rest of the grand fiscal year, that is. Intensive outpatient treatment was decreased, projected as needed. They also want to include a breathalyzer for the program, bus passes for their clientele to get to the drug and alcohol commission office, as well as appointments for treatment and added certain boxes of drug and alcohol screening for the intermediate punishment clients. So although I'm here today, the modifications actually have drug and alcohol. It's a modest modification. When talking to PCCB, and I say modest, it's twenty-one hundred dollars, is what we're asking for. So when talking to them, they can't guarantee we've received the money, but because it's something that's very reasonable, they believe it's something they should be able to do. And I'm requesting for your approval and signature, because even though it's an agreement, one of the odd things that they want to get the actual physical papers in hand before they can really move forward with it. So electronically, I can apply for it, but I would need your signatures and sort of sale mail, you know, to do that, so.
So are we, we're basically just asking for the money here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it doesn't require a county match on our end?
No, no match.
Oh, well, then that's an easy resolution.
No match. No guarantee we can get it, but.
But you'll, you'll, listen, I'll have to ask. That's right, absolutely.
All right, any questions from my colleagues?
Just, just a minor one.
Yeah.
I'm going to be in Harrisburg Thursday and Friday on county business. How soon do you need our signatures?
If it's possible, do it today.
Yeah.
If it's possible.
I'll be around.
Matter of fact, I believe Carol has all the paperwork.
Oh, no problem.
Great.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, any objections to putting this on the agenda or putting this on the voting session for today?
No objection.
All right. Carol, what resolution would this be?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. All right. Thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have mental health and developmental services. Mr. Baldwin, come on up. Welcome to the hot seat.
Thank you.
So anyway, Scott was just appointed as our interim MHDS Administrator, and so I believe this is your first time.
It is, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Jen and Joe briefing on these quickly. The first is a contract between our office, MHDS, and Lawrence County Social Services. This is the IM four Q contract. It runs through July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and is not to exceed the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. The contract is, is to be paid via our ID-based funding, and these are services that are provided to do surveys on our intellectual disabilities, individuals living in our various housing locations. The rates and funding for this are set at the state level.
Okay. And this is with Lawrence County Social Services?
It is.
Okay. All right, and these, and the money, you just want to note, all comes out of, that, that base funding is provided through the state.
It's through the state. Yeah, the rates and the funding are all set at the state level.
All right, any objections to putting that on the agenda? Make that resolution, two thousand and twenty dash oh four seven. And your next contract?
Okay, this is actually a contract amendment between the Lawrence County Mental Health DS Office and Whole Life Services for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. The contract is to be amended from the original twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars to thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty, and this is to be paid for via the DS base funding. This request was submitted to the state and recently approved in order to make the provider whole. The funding was from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, so it doesn't impact or affect our current funding stream.
All right. And I want to, I'll stress again, this is paid for out of money provided to us by the state for.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
At a time of the, the budget crunch, if we want to make that.
Every expenditure.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have no issue. Any questions?
Real quick question, if I may. Whole Life Services, Scott, do you happen to know where they're located?
That's a good question. Kermitage Pennsylvania.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Any objection to placing this as resolution two thousand and twenty oh four eight?
Yeah.
All right. Good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, a Liquid Fuels Resolution, discussion and possible approval to extend the engineering agreement with Frank B. Taylor Engineering for the Wallace Road Bridge Project until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The basis for this resolution is simply that that specific bridge is of historical significance, and due to the historical review by the state, it's extending that deadline to two thousand and twenty-three. So that's effectively what's going on there.
If I may, I'd like to amend at the appropriate time, just to add in the first sentence where it states, "The Wallace Road Bridge over the north fork Little Beaver Creek." I'd like to add in there, "Located in Little Beaver Township." So that we know which municipality this bridge is situated in. It is a county-owned bridge, very lightly traveled. My recollection is when they did a traffic study a number of years ago, that I think the average daily traffic was about ten cars, ten vehicles per day. But Commissioner Boyd is absolutely right, that what's held this up is, is the PHMC, Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, has had some concerns about the, the actual history of the bridge and the manner in which it's designed. But I, when we get to the appropriate time, I'd like to include that language, if I may.
Is this, do you know, is this, is this the bridge on the dirt road?
Yes, one, one part of, I think, one, the one part, one side of the road is paved, but the other side is dirt.
That's fascinating. That's absolutely, that we still have dirt roads in the county. That's like, incredible. I actually, I can't wait. We've got to go on. I think one of these days, we're going to go on a tour.
The tour, the bridge tour.
The bridge tour.
I'm looking forward to that.
All right, we'll make that resolution, two thousand and twenty, I think that zero four nine. All right. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to allow for voting of resolutions two thousand and twenty dash zero four six through two thousand and twenty dash zero four nine?
Second.
All right, hearing a motion is a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we'll go through these expediently. Up first, we have resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero four six. Now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, that an amendment to resolution R dash two thousand and eighteen dash zero five for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency due to a budget revision. I'll take a, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion is a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carol, please call the roll.
Mr. Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution, oh, I'll make an amendment to that instead of R two thousand and nineteen, R two thousand and twenty. Resolution, R dash two thousand and twenty dash zero four seven. Now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, that the agreement listed in item two shall be approved starting January first, two thousand and nineteen, through January, or through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Authorization is hereby given to execute the following addendum. Lawrence County Social Services IM four Q, as detailed in attachment designated, two thousand and nineteen dash blank program. Description and rates also listed within the attachment. Do we have those attachments?
I have.
You have them? Okay, so we're good to go with that regard. But I will take a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion is a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution, two thousand and twenty dash zero four eight. Now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, that it is specifically understood and agreed to, the stated maximum of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars for various services shall be adjusted to thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Revised budget pages is or attached to support these changes. There is no language change to this contract. All provisions of the agreement dated July first, two thousand and eighteen, between the parties shall remain as heretofore established. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion is a second. Any discussion? Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution, two thousand and twenty dash zero four nine. Now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, that the agreement with Frank B. Taylor Engineering shall be extended to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the Wallace Road Bridge Project. And I'll note again, for the record, that this is because of historical review by the state.
I'll move for resolution forty-nine with the mandatory language in sentence one noting that will add the words "located in Little Beaver Township" by May.
Absolutely.
Second.
Hearing a motion is a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Announcements. Our next regular scheduled Commissioner's meeting is going to be at ten a.m. on today.